Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
Wyndham Northeast Supervisory Union Board to order. Today is October 28th. This meeting is being conducted via Zoom. And adjustments to the agenda, Chris. I'm aware of two. And on Molly's behalf, I'm going to add an item 5A, which is Building Committee Report. I anticipate this will be likely to take place in executive session. I'm also going to add an item 7C, which is Superintendent Evaluation. This also is an item which is likely to take place in executive session. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda?
Those are the two, those are the ones that we discussed, David. I have no further.
Okay. In that case, Chris, I think that it would be appropriate under Communication and Public Comment, if you would share the information which you sent out around 5 o'clock. I think that's very much relevant to school tonight.
Sure. So I'm going to read the message that I sent out through our school messenger around 5 o'clock today, as David indicated. And I'm just going to read it verbatim as it was sent, and it was also sent in an email. This message is to notify the Wyndham Northeast community that the district is aware of the local case of COVID at the Westminster Head Start Program. Keep in mind, this program is a private program that is not part of the Wyndham Northeast Supervisor Union, but we will continue to work with the state and the state contact traces as needed. While there's a lot of concern out there, we currently have no cases in Wyndham Northeast Supervisor Union and continue to follow the Vermont Department of Health guidance. Additional communication will come as recommended by the Vermont Department of Health. So that's the message that went out at 5 o'clock today. It was a busy day. I would like to, you know, extend my gratitude to Director Andy Haas and the nurses and their staff, because there was a lot of communication had to take place, as you can imagine, and everyone did a fantastic job. The nurses kept us all in the loop. They met, they came together, and we'll continue to keep an eye on the situation. And the state has been heavily involved as well. But like I said, that's independent from Wyndham Northeast Supervisor Union, but we're all in the same community. So we're all trying to communicate and making sure that we're keeping everyone safe during this time. So that's the communication that went out at 5 o'clock today.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Is there any additional communication or public comment? Okay, Chris, can you kill the agenda here? Because I've only got four people on my screen right now. Great, thank you. And I'm going to reiterate that one more time, although I realize that's incorrect grammar. Is there any additional communication or public comment? Okay, there appears to be none. Minutes of October 14, 2020. I want to ask for a motion on this from Priscilla Lambert. Priscilla, would you care to offer a motion?
I was going to say that, should I make a motion tablehead at this time? I would like to see more information about the questions and discussions at the meeting. So I would move to table a vote on the minutes until the next meeting to allow for those to be added.
Okay, I want to point out to the board that Priscilla and I have had some dialogue over this. It's obviously a non-debatable motion, so I'm going to seek a vote from the SU Board on this. Lynn Morgan, how do you vote?
Do you want, do you want to have any discussion on this?
Well, a motion table is non-debatable.
Okay, it's a motion table, thank you, sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Jessa?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Okay, Priscilla?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Okay, Jason? Molly, are you here? Yes, you are, thank you. How do you vote, Molly?
Yes.
Okay, motion is tabled. This will come back up at our next meeting. I'm anticipating that meeting may be the 11th, although I'm aware that's Veterans Day. Moving along to Policy Committee Update. Jack, would you like to update us on your committee's work of a few minutes ago?
Sure. We have one policy involving electronic communication that we are, that we will be bringing before this board on its next meeting. It's really just a technical amendment. Because of COVID, the language we've used about, about the use of devices, it needs to be modified for kind of obvious reasons. More broadly, we're having a review of our overall body of policies, because the PDFs that we have were from an earlier era. There's some electronic material that may be more recent, and we need to get, make sure that we have a definitive set of policies from which to work. Jessa West Clark has offered to assist filtering through the multiple versions of all the policies. It's actually a fair amount of work. I hope she knows what she got herself into. But she has given us a, she was willing to give us a deadline of next week. I told her to take the full two weeks, and at which point, Chris, I, and David, and by the way, George, we need a member from the Rock Board. We'll reassemble and start to do a stem to stern list of policies. Chris has set up a, sort of a list of items that are high priority, and those would be the first ones we get to, but we're going to work off. But first, we're going to make sure that we've got an updated list of policies so that we can get this show on the road. And we expect to be meeting probably biweekly for a while to get this stuff ground out. Molly came in late, but she may not have heard that we're going to meet every two weeks. But Molly, we're going to be meeting every two weeks. So there you go.
Just make it a little later. I came in on two wheels.
Yeah, I understand, understand. We'll work on that. All right, that's it from, from the, from our perspective. If there's any questions, this is your time. Also, we may reach out to one of our colleagues who has some legal background, and I'm going to talk to Mr. Fine to see if he's going to put in a little time to help us out. If that's, if he's unable to, we may, we may reach out to the community to see if we can find a community volunteer with a JD on their back of their name, because I think it's useful in these cases. And I hate playing lawyer, so.
Thank you, Jack. Anything else under policy?
That's it.
Okay. Molly, we added an item 5A, which is Building Committee. I do not know if you have a report that you would like to make to the SU Board, given the fact that it does involve real estate. We have that tentatively pegged for an executive session. Should we go ahead with that, Molly?
I am prepared for that, yes.
Okay, then we will address 5A, Building Committee under Executive Session. Item 6, Reports, Superintendent of Schools.
Hey, good evening, everyone. So I don't have all the principals here with us tonight, but what I, I do have is an update from all of them. So just give me a little, a couple of minutes just to bring you up to speed in regards to the changes or if we have any changes since the few weeks ago when I had them report out. So we'll start with Athens Grafton. As you know, K-2 returned on October 19th for four days, and 3-6 will return on November 2nd for the four days. So Athens Graftons will have K-2 students in the building on Monday. Third grade through sixth grade will, will join. And the, we'll, let me rephrase that. So are the Athens Grafton, like we talked about, all their kids are back. And on Monday, the third and the sixth grade will also join them. There'll be a total of 39 students, with eight of those students were from the VTVLC to make a grand total of 47 students who'll be back four days a week. Saxon's River changes for K-2 as of 10/29. Increased staff during recess. Additional floor markings, health screenings, reverse locations due to increase of numbers. And for safety reasons, record attempts, nurses entering data into the form thereafter, increased cleaning of high-traffic areas. So they're making some adjustments in the building in general in regards to having students back in the building, so they are on top of that. Changes for 3-4 as of 11/2. Additional plexiglass barriers for the third grade. Additional hand washing bathroom locations for the third grade and increased cleaning for high-traffic areas. And as you know, Saxon's River has K-2 returned on October 19th, and 3-4 will be back on November 2nd, both for four days. Moving on to Central School, just to review. Kindergarten returned on October 19th. First and second will return on November 2nd. And we have a few changes in regards to third and fourth. And so just to bring the board up to speed, and this may be new to even the Rockingham Board, is that the teacher candidate that Principal Kennedy had for the position dropped out, for the third-grade teaching position dropped out. So they've reposted the position already. And through the use of a substitute teacher, which is a non-certified teacher with a maximum of six weeks, the plan is to open the second grade three classrooms. She says we have reposted the position and are hoping that the teacher will emerge from the December graduation cohort at Keene State or other institutions. The fourth grade will open up, as discussed, on 11/9, and either in the library or in the classroom, depending on furniture rearrangement schedule. And let's see, currently enrolled and possibly for more for the, right now, they have 21 currently enrolled and possibly more from VTVLC waitlist. And they also advertise for the second grade and four positions, too. And both groups will return four days a week on 11/9/20. Westminster, just to review. K-3 returned on October 19th. Created two third grades, two kindergartens, one first grade and one second grade. Fourth through sixth will return on November 2nd. And sixth grade will continue the AB schedule for now. And the ones who are returning will be back for the four days. Update, Reconfiguration of pods based on student numbers. They have four pods, a K-1, a 2, 3, a 4, and a 5, 6. They're utilizing all classrooms. They separated out the third grade into two smaller classes, making one of the second-grade teachers a third-grade teacher. Opened up the gym for PE class. Lunch will remain in the classroom. Arrival and dismissal procedures remain the same. They maintain their pods recess zones, which is, which alternate daily, and started a waiting list for students who want to return from VTVLC. Middle School, just to review. 6-8 will remain in hybrid for now, and fifth grade on November 2nd. As of 10/27, all fifth-grade students are scheduled to return on Monday, November 2nd. They said they had to rearrange a couple of teacher classrooms to accommodate the additional students. The middle school is planning on having all sixth-grade students back on Monday, November 30th, the first day of the second trimester. The middle school are in the process of rearranging classrooms to accommodate the 40 students in the sixth grade. And at this time, the VTVLC students that wish to return are also being on a waiting list. They currently, and there is currently one sixth grader and one eighth grader student on the list. No updates from the high school. They're still, their original plan. They're still looking at students struggling remotely back for four days a week. Right now, they're looking, they, like they said before, they were looking at about 35 students total to be back for the four days of the struggling learners. And so there's no change in the, in the high school plan. They're trying to get those struggling learners back, or I believe they're already back. And for the pre-K, the Thursday and Friday, the older group of students will begin coming to school on Wednesday, beginning October 21st. So that already took place. And that day, like the others, will be from, will be 8 to 10, and 8, 10 to 110. An update for the pre-K. Pre-K moves to step three was smooth and successful. The older group is now attending three days. The transition went well, and no changes to the plan were needed. So that is the update on the Europena update by school.
Questions for the superintendent? Chris, I have one. Staffing, how are we looking now staffing-wise? Obviously, we have an issue with Central Elementary's third-grade position. Are we otherwise doing all right, or?
In the current situation we are, I think, as we talked about before, you know, we do have some staff throughout the SU who themselves have compromising health issues. So if we were to come back and have all the kids come back, that still leaves some of the schools in a difficult position, because these teachers would not be able to come back, although we will have the students back. But right now, the staffing, we're in good shape, just like any SU in the state. It's really difficult to find substitute teachers right now. But, so, I mean, right now, we're okay. But once we have kids come back, we're trying to come up with a plan of what that would look like for anyone who has compromised health condition that would not allow them to, to return. Some suggestions would be that we would have an educator in the classroom, and that teacher would still be able to conduct their class via remotely and just would support in the classroom, whether it be the principal or someone like that to support the students in that classroom. So we're trying to be accommodating to the employees as well that have to stay home because of their health condition.
Chris, I will comment on that. Prior to the establishment of VTVLC, Jeff Renard, who's the director of VTVLC, conducted an online class for River Valley Tech Center, which had enrollments across the state and as far south as Connecticut. They had some very large enrollments. I think they were from Enesburg, and they did put a pair in the room in Enesburg to assist kids in that class. I just want to point out that it can be done. And there, there are some precedents for it. And I do have one more question for you, Chris. You may have mentioned it already, but the status of 7 and 8 at Bellows Falls Middle School?
That has not changed. We are, right now, they're focusing on sixth grade. The, the Rockingham Board did discuss with the principal is looking out to alternative spaces. You know, some of the Rockingham members were going to get back to her in some spaces that may be available in town, so she's waiting for that. So that's the latest on the seventh and eighth grade.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Chris before we move on to Business Office? All right.
David, this is Cheryl. I have, yes, thank you. Chris, I heard you refer to a waiting list for those students who, I think, maybe are choosing not to be in the virtual learning program and want to come back. Is that correct? Could you just explain that? This is the first time I've heard the terminology of a waiting list for those students used.
So we had students that want to come back from VTVLC. And so the initial, when kids signed up, it was they, they were, they were told that upfront that it's going to be until, you know, Christmas in regards to them returning from VTVLC, although our teachers, who are part of it, would be tied in for the entire year. And so there have been a few cases where students have, have come back, but it's based on their educational needs, whether it be an IEP or it's just not really working. We've tried to accommodate that. But the only way that we could make sure that we are bringing kids back, if we don't either have the space or the teachers to do so, is to put them on that list and have them come back. Because we're trying to be accommodating in regards to, the initial thought was, and I can have Lynn Dr. Carey talk about this a little more, working even more closely with the VTVLC, is that we're, we're trying to be accommodating and getting kids back in the building, but we can't if the space isn't available or we don't have the teachers to accommodate that. So we're just creating that waiting list so we know first come, first served. We're eventually getting everyone back in the building based on the space needs, because the social distancing is really what's limiting us from, it's the only thing really limiting us from bringing students back, aside from a few teachers that wouldn't be able to. Lynn, is that accurate in regards to what I just said in regards to the waiting list in the VTVLC?
Yeah. So when, after, you know, first two weeks, several came back. I think the following week or so, we had about 12 to 15 kids, K-8, wanting to come back. I believe that, I think people were surprised at how rigorous it was. And they, they thought it would be more like what we did last year during COVID. But even now, our remote class on Wednesdays is more rigorous, and we have a lot more planning. We just know more now than we did then. However, some classes, particularly in Central, are very, they just don't have the room for three feet apart. So we offer them Saxon's River. If it's Westminster, we offer them Grafton. We're trying to move the kids where we have the room to fit them. The problem being that the kids that are in virtual are already so far in now that they would kind of, it would be educationally difficult for them to leave one program and pick up another, you know, right in the middle of a semester or report card time. So those, what we're telling them is that they, they really need to stay on until that first semester's over. I think it's like the first or second week in January, and then we'll reassess and see how we can bring them back. If they really are adamant they need to come back, we offer them the schools with the room. And then if that isn't working, we put them on waiting list. And if a student moves or a student decides to be at home, for whatever reason, they can move into that slot. Right now, the school that's hit the hardest, of course, is Central. And, but they're taking back all the grades, I think, except third grade right now. But once we open that up, we'll have 15 and 15. So that, we'll be able to add a few more. There's one class of 20 in fourth grade, so that's going to be tight. But those are the difficult spots right now that I'm aware of, that there's, there's a waiting list, unless they choose to go to Saxon's River or Grafton.
Thank you, Lynn. And I want to make note of the fact that you do have, although certainly, a follow-up, Cheryl. I simply want to recognize the fact that I do have hands, both from Jack and from Jason Terry. So after you've had your follow-on question, I will recognize those two members who have been waiting patiently. I know you're out there. So go ahead, please, Cheryl.
Thank you. It's actually a restatement for the public thinking about Fact TV, because Lynn, Dr. Carey had been very clear previously that when people enrolled in the virtual learning program, that they were to stay in for the whole semester, which you've just restated, and that they had two weeks to try it out. And if that didn't work, then they could come back. But what you and Chris Pratt have been describing is that after that initial two-week period, students and families have found, for some of them, that it's not working. And that's why we've created this waiting list. I think it's an important issue for people to understand what happened, that there was, that's unusual. But anyway, I believe that my restatement was accurate. Is that correct, Lynn?
It is correct. And again, we, we are offering seats at Grafton. They have small classes, and they're willing, they're willing. It's more difficult if it's not Westminster, because they're the same district. But at Central, we're offering Saxon's River. That's the same district, because we, you know, the tuition and all that. But, correct, you're correct.
Thank you.
Anything else, Cheryl?
No, thank you.
Jack, and then Jason, and then George?
I wanted to ask if we have thought about a more intrusive testing program now that we're bringing everybody back? I'm noting that a lot of school systems in the state to our south are putting into effect biweekly testing as part of what they're doing. And I, most of the schools we have are pretty small, but, but certainly, the high school, at the very least, might benefit from it, and we might consider doing something. Generally, the tests tend to run about $30 per, but it's not a, it's not a bad thing to consider. I just don't know if we've considered doing it on a regular basis or on a random basis. I think they're doing like 10% of the student body a week just to make sure that there aren't any asymptomatic lurkers. We, has this even come up?
Yes, the, the school nurses and myself and then Dr. Carey, we, we meet on this, that's something that's come up. I know it came up from, at a board meeting a few, you know, a few weeks back. I believe it was the Athens Grafton Westminster Board meeting that we, doing the testing and stuff. And at that point, because they were doing it in colleges, where does that leave the, the public schools? I know there have been developments since then, and I know the nurses have a really good finger on the pulse in regards to what we have and what's available for us for testing. And so, yeah, I mean, it is on our radar when it is available, and it's also on the nurses' radar.
Okay, because I was in contact with the folks up in Montpelier today about this. And my impression was that if we wanted them, we could get them. But maybe that was just my impression from my Dr. Levine's office.
It's my understanding that they're still very selective in regards to who gets them. I'm not even sure. And the last time we checked, it, you know, it was not available for, for the public schools. It was more for other areas right now.
Okay, I don't know if the micro outbreak we're having might change that, so, whatever. All right, I'm cool, but just wanted, I, I will bring this up if the thing, if things start to roll out of control, just because I'd like us to be on top of it rather than have to react after we've had an outbreak.
Yeah, it's definitely on our radar.
Thank you, Jack. Jason Terry?
Chris, I was just wondering, did the third-grade teacher give an indication why she dropped out?
I'm not sure. I can check with the principal on that. Let me think for a second.
I can, I can help, Chris. She, it's only a one-year placement, number one. It was, it was a one-year job, although we're always, you know, at the end, somebody's retiring. We're always replacing. But she felt that with a one-year job, and my understanding was she was working at a nursery school or preschool, and they had just upped their days or just something, something the hours. And so she just felt, at this time, to move her family from, I want to say Heartland, I'm not sure, was, it was just too much for a job that might very well end in June. We can't, we couldn't guarantee another year, although the chances are pretty high that we probably could have. But she didn't want to move her family for a job that was only ending in June.
Is it advertised as a one-year job?
I believe, I think it is. Certainly, when we call them to schedule the appointment for the interview, we, we talk about, yeah, this is what the job is. This is, you know, what it entails. And I do believe it's, it's a one-year position, and it's advertised as that in school spring.
We're aware of it being a one, anytime we have a one-year position or a part-time position, they're aware of that right from the onset. But I think what it came down to is just when a push came to shove, it was too risky to, to make the move at this time.
Thank you. Any follow-up, Jason?
No, no, thanks.
Okay, George Smith?
Hi, yeah. So I've had parents, in particular, parents who are, whose kids are utilizing the VTLC program, ask what it's going to look like after Christmas when, if, if those VTLC kids decide to come back to school. Are they going to be on the waiting list as well? Or what, what's that going to look like for them?
Well, I guess it all, it all comes down to, the short answer would be, there's a possibility there based on the social distancing, because, you know, the spaces, that, you know, we're tied into the space we have. We hope not. We hope we're beginning to bring everyone back, but we're just, we're trying to put procedures in place for any circumstance that, that might come up. So my short answer is if, if, if it was to happen right now, we would have no choice but to, you know, keep the waiting list and bring kids back. I mean, I don't know how it's going to all pan out with so many of the decisions are made at the state level. It's really tough to say. Um, with so many of the decisions are made at the state level, it's really tough to, um, say what, you know, what, what we're, how we're going to handle this after Christmas. But if it was right now, yeah, I mean, I don't know how we would handle it based on the, the, the space that we have and what we can use.
So, so at this point, um, it would be yes, a waiting list until, um, any further change, correct?
Yeah, we would probably encourage tho, you know, those people to stay into VTVLC and, and until, um, you know, the guidelines loosen up for social distancing.
Thank you.
Priscilla?
I was just trying to clarify, um, Mr. Pratt, I, I'm, Carrie, Carrie had told us that the K, uh, first and second would be starting this Monday, the 26th. Did that happen or it wasn't clear with what the guidelines that you just gave us as to what happened?
Yes, they have started. So we're expecting the additional grades to come back this coming Monday.
Okay, so the first second did start this, this last Monday?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do we have anything else under Supers report?
I do have the enrollment and attrition data that I can share real quick if you'd like.
Please do, Chris.
Everyone can see the screen? So, um, new enrollment versus unenrolled students?
Chris, that's a negative. I can't see your screen.
Right, I probably forgot to share it. Okay, better? All right, so, um, we have two here, so. So the question was, you know, we have this increase of enrolled students, but what does that look like? The overall numbers that we have, what's the, what's, what's the actual here tied in to how many kids moved out? So we have 17 students that we know of are no longer in the district or the SU. And then with the 65 new enrollments, it leaves us with, we're still up 48 students right now. Um, and then compared to last year, what we have is the blue is the 1920 Administrative Daily Membership, which is pretty much the acronym for, how many kids we have based on the state as of October 1st of each year. And so last year we had 1,126. And like, right now, I mean, there's probably could be a little fluctuation here in regards because it is a constant change. Um, we're about 976 and that's about a difference of 150 students. So we're, we're down a little bit, but the, the prize is, is that, you know, we're up 48 here. You know, there's 150, um, student difference here. I mean, it's, it's something that I'm going to continue to work on and keep an eye on. Um, so, but this is, this is the information I have right now. And keep in mind too is that the numbers that we have for the 1920, that set from the state, we're able to get that data from the state. We do not have the actuals for 2021, um, because we just turned them for October 1st. So I can assume that this number here is probably going to be on the low side and we'll just wait to see what the state comes back with, because if you remember, they have these percentages and calculations for each grade level. Um, but hopefully, um, as soon as they come out with that, I will adjust this, um, this draft chart and reshare it with, with everyone. So you can see what the differences are. Um, but that's what I, I found so far is that, um, that was the old average daily membership for the entire SU there. And we're up 48 students. So I can anticipate once the state gives us our information that, um, these numbers will be a lot closer.
Chris, I want to ask you because we probably have some people, uh, sitting at home as well as your board chair here. They're saying we're up 48 students, but our average daily membership is down 150. That's, that's higher math. And I think that what we need to have is an understanding of the fact that, kids who are in our buildings carry different weights depending upon where they are um, in the school and if they carry any particular handicap. So if you could do that, or if Andy, uh, could give us a very brief, hopefully coach and explanation of how, uh, student counts are weighted, I think that'd be very helpful. Or Lynn, or anyone else who has the answer?
Andy, Lynn, you want to, Andy, you want to try tackling that?
Um, I, I would, I would not feel comfortable, um, without researching that a little bit better.
So, yeah, so I can talk a little bit about it. So at each, each grade level, the, the state waits students differently. Um, for instance, um, if, you know, kindergarten, first, second graders, they, they count them as like maybe half of a student. And then as you get up to the middle school and high school, their weight carries a little more because there's more, more involved in their, their instruction and their education. And so the weight goes up. So say at the elementary school, they waited for half a student and the middle, you know, middle and high school, it's full student. Uh, if they're on a learning plan or IEP, their weight might be more than, um, one, it could be 1.5. So that's, when we talk about average daily membership, it's a lot different than just saying counting the bodies in the seats in the school. And so, um, that's what we're talking about here. It's more of a technical term and how, um, the schools are weighted because that's how they give us our, our grant monies based on that. You know, our, our, our funds come from the ADM. The, the state doesn't say, okay, um, Wyndham Northeast has a total of, you know, 1,126 students, we're going to count it on that. And so that's not actually the case. Every student is weighted based on their educational need, their grade level and where they are. Um, so it's just not, um, a one-for-one ratio when it comes to the state.
Okay, thank you, Chris. I will point out to board members, this will have implications for budgeting. And Chris, if you would, if we could return to the full screen so I can see if we have other members who may have questions. Other questions? I'll, I'll take a verbal request. Cheryl?
Thank you. Uh, just another request. I could see the number of people that were reporting as having moved away. What's our sense of the number of people who have enrolled their children in schooling at home? Therefore, they're not listed as a member of the Supervisory Union any longer, but they may not technically have moved away. I wondered if we have any handle on that, especially having been told that the number of homeschoolers has increased dramatically in the state.
Yeah, let me check real quick on my, on my, um, enrollment to see if I've included that, the homeschool fees.
Again, homeschoolers are not considered part of our Supervisory Union.
That's correct.
Whereas the, the, the children in the Vermont Learning, um, Collaborative or whatever Vermont, whatever that acronym is, they're fully remote kids are, are included.
Right, I mean, the, um, the homeschool kids aren't, I know that has gone up. I don't think it's gone up significantly for Wyndham Northeast. Um, I get there, I just got the report the other, last week and it didn't seem, um, it was probably an additional, I think, five or six kids who are homeschooling right now. So it hasn't gone up tremendously, but that adds to the count. It, it's my understanding, Lynn, it's, we're correct that we still, um, count our VTVLC kids for our ADM count, correct?
We are responsible for them. We're testing them with MAP testing. We provide, if they're not coming to school, we, we have truancy, um, issue, you know, we take care of that piece. And yeah, they're still listed in, in our counts and they're still ours. Our teachers are teaching them, so they're still ours. Um, and I will look, if you give me a few minutes, I'll try and find those numbers, um, during the meeting when other people are talking about the homeschool, but it's not tremendously higher, to be honest, but I'll look.
Anything else, Cheryl?
No, thank you very much.
Question, Molly? A question, Jessa?
Yes, I think.
I do have a couple of questions. Actually, the, the first one, so Cheryl, the district does get homeschool numbers from the state, but homeschool enrollments as of mid-September, the division of the AOE that handles that is five to six weeks behind. So I don't think the numbers they're getting are going to be accurate, um, when it comes to totals. Because I think there's probably kids in limbo that don't show up as having enrolled in homeschool. Um, my other question, I was waiting, um, from the discussion about waitlisting. Since none of us have inter-district tuitioning, um, and Vermont is not a choice state, what are we doing to ensure equity in waitlisting? And are we waiting students by special needs or a certain application process? Or are we allowing parents input as to what sort of number their kids are getting on a waitlist? How is that being done?
I think we all, we, we always try to take into consideration the individual student needs, whether it's IEP 504, whether they're struggling in the program and they need to come back, like in a few cases now, just because no matter how you spin it, it's just not working. But, you know, right now we're dealing with the equity is that, um, for, you know, to be blunt, is that, you know, we have the two-week time period for people to switch over, um, and anyone who stayed in there. And I think the equity comes in is that we're providing them with the V, with the VTLC learning part. And they've agreed to, um, be part of that until at least January. And so we're just trying to work with them and if it's really not working, try to find a space for them. But, I mean, equity-wise, you know, we're covered because, um, they signed on the dotted line for the, for the VTVLC. And, um, you know, just like the other students, you know, decided to stay where they were and continue with the, um, remote and hybrid learning.
Okay, and I guess my only other thing was a comment about the spacing issues. Is there a standard for spacing non-COVID-wise, um, in schools? Because I know we talked specifically about Kelly Green's classroom and how fitting her normal group of kids, just with their desks three feet apart, puts some of them like 35 feet from the front of the classroom. That seems like that would be an issue in non-COVID times, um, to get really good instruction for all those individual kids.
Well, it hasn't been that, it really hasn't been an issue because, um, because then we didn't have to worry on desks and spreading out desks. You know, nowadays, most of the work is done, um, in group work at tables where it takes up a lot less space. So that really hasn't been a problem. What's doing it is the spreading out the desks and stuff.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any, anything else? Lynn, Carrie?
So I, I actually got the numbers if, um, you're interested in hearing them. Are, are you interested in hearing the homeschool?
Yes, please, Lynn.
Okay, um, the middle school has 11 students that are homeschooled. Uh, the high school has six that are homeschooled. Grafton has 12 that are homeschooled. Central has seven. Saxon's River has 17. And, um, Westminster has 20. So I did not add all those up. And what I'll do is I'll go back to last year and I can compare those and I can send those to you, Cheryl. So you, we'll know, there, it does look like a little increase, but not a lot, you know.
My number is 61, Lynn.
Pardon?
My number is 61 total.
Oh, wow. Yeah, so that looks like six, yeah. So, and I can check last year's numbers, but some of those names I have seen, you know, over the years that I've been with the district, so.
Okay, thank you.
I think, I think all the, I think all the board could benefit from seeing that. So when you send the comparison, send them to everybody, please.
I sure will, yes.
Okay, thank, thank you, Cheryl. And I'm sorry to interrupt you.
73, David, David, I got 73.
Oh, you got 73? Thank you. You're, you're, uh, a better mathematician than I am, and thank you for that correction.
I had time to do it while you didn't.
Okay. Good, all right. Anything else before we move to, uh, Business Manager?
I have one more thing. It's a nice transition to the Business Manager. And so, um, I just wanted to call it up real quick so I don't get it wrong. So as, um, today, um, Flora and I met with the auditors and we are anticipating on December 30th, all the audits will be, um, presented to the board in draft form with management letters. So, um, that was after the, the meeting that we had today with the auditors that we met for some time. It came up with a game plan. And so it's a good transition into, um, the Business Office Report.
Very briefly, Chris, this is fiscal year 1920?
This is for the fiscal year 20?
Yeah. Well, uh, Flora, you're on.
Thank you. Um, so yeah, so as Chris mentioned, December 30th, uh, when we meet again, we all should be able to have the, um, final draft, well, the draft financial statement, the four of them. So that way, um, it could be reviewed and we could discuss it and everything. Um, they will be in office for us as November 9th. So we're going to have, um, two dedicated auditors in office for us. And then by November 30th, we should be able to have all our books reconciled and general entries done. So, um, we are going to have as well, uh, one-on-one auditor in with us for a week. So, uh, we go accomplish and put everything together that they, um, are going to be meeting when they come in on 11/9. So by, that means you guys should have a little patience with us when requesting things because we are going to be, um, really busy. Um, so for us, um, we got today posted in the, um, grant system. Uh, one of the grants, the CFP grant got approved, um, and it was showing in the red cost in it, which is great. It's, um, 2.64%. Um, I still have one grant, um, that I need to, uh, resubmit and update because it was submitted in January. So it's not showing the indirect cost in it because they didn't have the information. But, uh, I'll be fixing that tomorrow for them. Um, I've been getting payments from the towns when they've been collecting, um, taxes. But I am having issues with Rockingham. Um, it's the only town that haven't, we haven't been able to collect taxes from. I follow up, um, today again with them. Cause we do have, um, uh, we have a payment due for, um, I guess it was, um, some bank loans that we did in 2006, 2007 and 2012. So I have that loan on hold until we get any payment from, um, Rockingham. So I don't know if any of you could give it an extra push. I did, um, email today, um, Ms. Verbella. I called her as well and left her a voicemail. I emailed as well, um, Kathleen, which is the town clerk. So, um, other than that, I don't know what else we could do. But, um, we'll see if I get any answers tomorrow. If not, I'll keep you guys posted to see if there's any other way that we could go with them because it's the only town that hasn't done anything at this point for us. Um, I was as well going to report for the food service. So, um, as of today, year-to-date, um, according to the expenses that we have for food service and, um, grants that they got, we at least have to now, uh, 43K revenue, which is really good. But, um, the food service program got, um, grants approved and the summer program got extended. So that actually has helped a lot.
Yeah, and, and Lynn is, Lynn, Dr. Carey's got, has a little presentation on the, the food services as requested by the board to give you further information on that when Flora is done here.
And then, um, what else here? Okay, so, um, we've been having everything, um, put together for you guys, um, every other week for warrants. Um, as of today, um, none of you guys have come to the business office or made any attempt to look at the warrants. Uh, I would like to know what you guys would like us to do because me having the warrants in the office is put it on hold AP. You know, um, that's Marlene's work put on hold for a whole week for nobody to come in and look at it.
Let me respond to you on that.
There's a lot on her.
Let me respond to you on that floor. I realize that you're on a, a two-week cycle with AP and pay, am I correct in that? Um, and of course, I'm, I'm one of your signers and, uh, pre-COVID, of course, we all came in and signed. And I think most of us certainly went through invoicing to see, um, what was there. I think that it's, um, exceptional, uh, uh, customer service here that you have made those available. I'm going to suggest that if you can leave them out, um, for 48 hours after you furnish, um, warrants for signature, that either, uh, we're going to get in and look at them or we're not. Of course, I'm just as guilty as anyone else who has not come into the office to do that. But I'm also a guy who works better on a tight deadline than when you give me, um, a lot of time to get the work. better on a tight deadline than when you give me, um, a lot of time to get the work done. So I'm gonna suggest that if nobody has any objection, that that's, uh, the way I think that you, this board would like you to handle that, because that would move the rest of the work in your office along a little more efficiently, would it not Flora?
Yes, it's, it's the fact of having everything pending. She just can't do anything else because I have them all on hold. You know, she constantly has to start looking all over the packages and everything. She can file them. So, uh, it's a lot. And then when she's gonna have the other ones ready, she has to take all of those ones out, because it's been a hold already for over a week. And then she has to start filing. So it, it puts a hold on, on her workload.
Forty, forty hours and then move, move your agenda forward, please Flora. And I will make an attempt to get in, because I do have curiosity about some items, which I'm, uh, uh, seeing, uh, the warrant for that understanding, the underlying invoicing. So thank you for that. Uh, Flora, do you have anything else under the food service account? And I'm asking the question because I want to just stop, uh, for a moment and ask Cheryl Charles, if you have any questions about food service up to this point, Cheryl, because this was a discussion that you and I had, I think, last week. And if you
I, I'm glad to hear that the revenue is positive right now, because looking at the most recent, um, financial report, it was not at all. So I'm interested to hear about that.
So, um, the reason why it's not, um, it wasn't, so we started updating the system and putting everything in. Um, and what you have is up to September. Uh, we haven't been able to put everything in for October, because the month of October is not closed. So we can do a journal entry as any revenue until that grant is closed, which will be in the end of October. So this, you should be it, uh, you should be able to see it the first week of November. Once everything gets closed and approved for October, then we could post revenue for October. So I could put, I could post expenses as we are spending, but I cannot post revenue until we occur the revenue. So for October, you occur the revenue at the end of October, they close, once they send it to us, we'll be receiving it at the beginning of November. But even if I receive it in November, I have to post it in October. But that's the issue that you are finding. So going by that, we should have, um, a rough estimate of at least forty-three K in revenue. When we receive October's payment.
I, thank you.
Does that make sense? It, it is a little confusing.
Um, I'm not seeing any, uh, yes, I do see a hand, Priscilla.
Get this on mute. Um, yeah, I've had some, heard some chatter about, um, problems with pay and discrepancies in those. And I was wondering how you are, um, approaching those and how you are trying to solve issues with, with, any errors that are taking place. I'm sure maybe your new setup with the different people, maybe that'll help some too. But I was wondering how you're allowing, you know, getting employees to be able to come to you and be able to work those out.
So right now I can't say errors itself, because we've been fixing errors that we've been encountering, uh, on the go. Uh, but I, I work one-on-one with Shawna. So we've been working constantly and trying to update everything that we've been finding. So up to now, you know, like yesterday she finished, um, updating everything for food service for, um, the past FY nineteen and now FY, FY twenty. So maybe that is, um, some of the issues that you guys found, you know, it's just things maybe not being coded or allocated to the correct place. Like we did find that there were some allocations and, uh, like a snack program, which we haven't been serving snacks for a long time. So that, that was money that we needed to move and allocate to the, um, correct account.
Well,
I was talking about like employees and their, and their problems, if they've got just problems with their errors, what, how you're addressing those and how those are being handled. So get those taken care of, so they're not ongoing through the year.
So any, um, employees issues that, right now I haven't found any employee issues, you know, uh, any employees that had any discrepancies with anything. I always get copied on the emails and we just try to, um, find whatever is the issue that could be. Like for example, it could be an employee, you know, getting paid still as a pass rate, but the contract was just signed recent. But those are like system updates and what we've done with those cases is just, you know, the next run will do the adjustments. But I could say it's not even a handful. It's like one, maybe two cases. It's not something ongoing.
Is that your answer, Priscilla?
Um, I had just heard chatter that were ongoing some and some that, that were cropping up. And I was just wondering whether the employees coming in to take care of those, whether you're having to email, what, how they were handling it. That's
It's, I've been hearing from Florida that the business office is addressing those and certainly we can follow up again when this board meets. The reason we have an item on here called, uh, financial, uh, probably business office management update is that there were a number of changes which have taken place in the offices. I think all board members are aware. And this is on here because we want to make sure that we're working out, um, the bugs and that we're moving, um, the business office forward. So w- once again, uh, Priscilla, that, that question will be fair game when we meet, uh, likely on the eleventh. Um, anything else before we hear from, uh, Lynn Flora?
Yes. So, um, mentioned something directly to you, you can always tell the person, they can email me. And I could always follow up with whoever it is, because it could be so many different aspects. It could be something as, you know, by the time that they sign the contract, you know, if it is anything pending, you know, sometimes a contract got signed, but it got signed when the payroll was running. It could be so many different, um, aspects of, as of why. You know, but unless the person like emails me, and I have been always really open with everybody and, you know, like if there's any issues, the first person that they should approach and email is actually me. And then I could just follow up on whoever we could delegate to fix it. But, um, like I said, um, if it was maybe one case, it, it would have been a case contract wise.
Thank you, Flora. Did you have a hand?
Let me just say, thank you. That sounds proactive.
Welcome.
Thanks, Priscilla. Okay. Anything else, um, before we, uh, moved out to finance report? Is there anything you want to add for finance report, uh, Flora?
Uh, no, I, I, you guys are supposed to be getting the budget versus actual. I don't know if anybody had reviewed it. Um, I don't really get any emails or any questions from you. Or any concerns with the reports.
We'll ask this again next month. And, um, Chris, um, did, did Lynn have additional information about the food service that she wanted to present? Lynn, do you?
Yes. He's gonna share the screen with some good information. If you're talking Lynn, you're muted.
Thanks. So I'm sharing the screen and
We can see it.
Good. I, I'm just gonna, um, um, and let me close this. So I just wanted to, to fill everyone in on the, uh, grants that we've been getting, um, since two thousand and eighteen. When, uh, they, the, uh, the food service, uh, became, uh, district wide or SUY and Harley's taken over. So, um, he's been very, very active. So as grant writer, I work closely with him. And, uh, we've been really successful and, and having a good time with it. So in two thousand and eighteen, you can see there was a grant for the New England Dairy Council. And that was for equipment, uh, various, uh, kitchen equipment for Westminster's kitchen. Blender, food storage, kitchen cart. These things add up, as you can see. Uh, CNS, um, has really supported us a lot. And this is a no kid hungry grant. And again, five thousand dollars for all, all kinds of equipment. Carts, potato cutter, that potato cutter, uh, cuts, um, french fries, um, from, you know, raw potatoes, rice cooker, food processor. And then the Vermont Agency of Agriculture Farm to School Child Nutrition Grant. And that's the one where we got that beautiful, brand new stove and oven, uh, for fifteen thousand dollars and a food processor. So, um, in two thousand and nineteen, CNS again, no kid hungry grant gave us eleven thousand. Originally Harley had put it down for five thousand. And then they just gave us another six thousand. The mixer he bought for the middle school was five thousand five hundred alone. So this, this kind of restaurant quality, uh, equipment is very expensive. So again, you could see some of the things he's bought and, uh, the hand washing, these insulated food, uh, pan carriers, uh, canopy tents for, uh, summer foods. Another Agency of Agriculture Farm to School Nutrition Grant, and that one was for the, the Union District, uh, Westminster and Grafton, and they received fifteen thousand. And what their, their focus was on educating in the classroom. They have cooking carts. Educating about food and preparing food and using food in the classroom from the school gardens. Also, we have a parent in the district. Her name is Katie Dearborn. She's a parent of a, um, high school student. And she was able to somehow, she talked with Harley and they, Mescoma Bank in Wapo, New Hampshire gave us three thousand five hundred dollars to, uh, for our unpaid student meal debt, which is incredible. That was just such a, a great thing, because generally across the state, across the country, food programs are always generally running in the red. Again, two thousand and twenty, this year, uh, another dairy council grant, fifteen hundred that paid for half of a milk cooler. We came up with the other half and I believe that milk cooler went to the middle school. I'm not sure. Another, um, Agency of Agriculture Child Nutrition, um, this was a food service, um, equipment grant. This was a seven thousand dollar peeler for the high school. And what this peeler does is it, it, it really helps, um, all these fresh, you can, all these fresh vegetables we get, the, uh, the, the turnips and the butternut squash and the carrots and all these hard things or time consuming things to peel. But they're the best because they're fresh and they're from the farm. And they're sustainable and easier and more, uh, less expensive for us to get than prepared food. So, um, this will, this is a real time saver and all these, all of that peeled stuff goes throughout the district. So again, that was half of a peeler. And, uh, we just purchased that, um, because we, the food service, uh, was able, as Flora mentioned, they were able to, uh, kind of get into the black, because all of the meals we're serving this year from March until next June, last March till next June are all paid for. Every child in our district is getting free breakfast and free lunch. And so when we get reimbursed, uh, from the state for that, um, it just fills in our coffers. That's why we're really wanting to go universal free meals. But anyhow, so we were able to come up with the other half of that peeler. Vermont Feeds, Vermont Community, uh, Foundation, uh, COVID Response Grant. We were able to, uh, get five thousand dollars and that was for, um, uh, well, things we needed for the COVID. Uh, this is a grant here in twenty twenty-one. We say twenty twenty-one, we'll probably get the money after the new year. This is a no hungry kid nutrition hubs grant. It's pending. In fact, we sent it in today. So don't go to the bank with this one, but we're looking for refrigerated cargo van for about forty thousand. The idea being we serve so many more meals in July, when we were able to deliver them. And in September, when we couldn't deliver, because the buses are being used with kids, you can't put food and kids on the same bus. We can't deliver, the buses are with the A group bringing them home, but we have three days a week where the B kids are home. And then when the B kids are in school, we have three, you know, the A kids, um, are home three days. So we're not able to deliver the meals in the same vehicle as, uh, kids. So you could see in the summer, we were up to about forty thousand meals. But in September, when it just became, we're feeding you in school and families can pick up when their, when their kids are not in school. We're only, you know, doing about eleven thousand meals. So we made a case, wrote a narrative, uh, applied for this grant, and we're really, um, hoping that, you know, that we can get this van, because the possibilities will open up. Uh, we also deliver meals for DCYF families, homeless families, um, everywhere from Rattleboro to Windsor. And so we're, we're really hoping, we're mostly concerned about our families in Athens. They can't walk to school to pick up meals where they can in Bellows Falls, you know, they can go right to the middle school and families that are home in town, they can just walk to the middle school and get their meals uh, when they're not in school, but it's not the same, not equity. There's no equity for families out in the rural areas. So this is our big one, our COVID relief funds, our CRF, uh, food grant. Earlier this year, probably in September, we got a hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars. And, um, this is just general, but the staff costs for packaging and delivering. So over the summer and even during the school year, we actually had to hire a couple of extra hands to help because we were making so many meals. So that cost was covered. That was a COVID cost. Meal packaging supplies, everything now has to be individually packaged. You know, there's no conveyor line like in the old lunchrooms. Um, and then the insulated, uh, food storage, um, that costs money. The, um, the trays and, and the, uh, the way they have to transport the food. Right now we're only cooking in three kitchens because our cooking's down. So we're cooking in the middle school, the high school and Saxon's River. And those are our, uh, bigger, newer kitchens. And so we're transporting food out to Grafton, Westminster, Central. Uh, so, and then we had this equipment modification, which again, you see it everywhere, plexiglasses and plexiglass and all kinds of protective stuff. And then the, uh, carts and the racks and the bins and the trays, uh, for preparing. So that one has already come in. There's another grant for this in the works. And I believe it's due November thirteenth and trust Harley to have, uh, another long list. So these grant funds are really, um, coming in, in wonderful. And, and we are so lucky with Harley and, uh, his program and his people. They work hard and they do a great job. So again, as you know, um, US Representative Peter Welch visited in the summer, uh, on August eleventh. And he shared his, you know, his vision for universal free meals for all our students. Uh, I can see I wrote out students, but he also shared with, uh, Harley and the team that the average school district in Vermont lost about two hundred and fifty thousand due to COVID. But our employees worked extraordinarily hard and delivering those meals, we made it our, our mission. And we actually were, were very lucky, because not only were we providing a much needed community service, but we did not lose money. And, uh, Harley went on to, to say that he's on the Vermont School Nutrition Awareness Board. And they, at their annual meeting, Secretary French and Patrick Leahy and Peter Welsh spoke at the meeting. And Representative Welsh, again, reported that he was amazed at what was happening in, um, what was going on in Bellows Falls. What we were doing for our children here in our WNESU district. So that's a real great success story. And I just have to shout out to Harley's leadership and willingness to apply for grants. How easy he is to work with. We collaborate. I, I write narratives. He gives me ideas. I write narratives. He puts in the numbers, things go. And, uh, so we've already received in just two years, a hundred seventy-five thousand uh, in two years. And we're hoping, again, another one hundred and sixty impending grants. And, uh, not only that, but we're able to use, um, you know, there's like a silver, silver lining and, and everything. And we're able to use these funds to really upgrade our kitchen equipment, which desperately needed to be done, um, in, in, you know, particularly when you looked at, you know, Bellows Falls stove and oven. I mean, that, they were dangerous. And so, um, but we're also getting, you know, like peelers and blenders and, and and it's just better functioning kitchen, safer environments. And we're getting high quality nutritious and delicious meals. So that's, that's where I am and that's, that's what we've been doing. And it's, thank you for listening.
I want to add, I did went, and we did had a walkthrough with, with Harley. I guess he wants that extra help from our area as well because he needs constantly with Shawna for the grants. And just to be sure that everything that he's got is up to date, you know, his payments. And I, I have to say, I worked in healthcare and I am impressed with his kitchen. I will eat in his kitchen any day. It's, it's amazing. He showed me the peeler, how it works, how it washed the vegetables and everything. And the whole process is just amazing, everything, how clean it is.
His food tastes really good. His food is excellent. The kids are eating foods that they would never have eaten before. And they're not eating processed food and it's, it's amazing what he's serving, amazing.
Nice, fresh, the way it's packed, the free equipment that he got for packing, you know, so it could be everything up to speed with regulations for COVID. His kitchen is amazing. I was impressed. I have like handouts to him, whatever he needs from us to, to keep his work up. I told him, we'll, we'll help, you know, to follow up on things for him and everything because I am really impressed with him and, and everything that he's done is, it was amazing. I, I was really happy and that he let us walk around and, and show us everything. It was really good for us as well to have the understanding what he needs and, and why and everything. It, it was great.
Anything else on food service? Lynn, Morgan?
In the warrants I was looking at, they had bills for composting. I guess getting rid of the scrap food. I was just wondering if there wasn't any way that, especially at the high school, that a compost pile couldn't be established and something that the science classes could work with, learning how to create compost and learning how all that works. And they could then bag it up and use it in the, the school gardens around the issue.
Dr. Carrie, do you care to respond?
Thank you. Yeah, we, we go around about that and we've talked a lot about it. The problem is there's so much compost being made. And with the, A, there's really nowhere to put it. And B, with the kids eating in the classrooms, they're throwing the food in each individual classroom now. It's not like a cafeteria where the liquids would go here, the food would go there and then the meat and all that go in the garbage. But we were having a hard time too, finding places that want compost right now with COVID. They don't want to come pick it up. We don't want them on the school grounds. And the kids are still, they're eating in their classroom anyway, but it is a big plan. It's part of these grants and it's a great idea, Lynn, thank you.
Anyone else before we move on? Okay, unfinished business for discussion and action. Bus repairs, Jennifer Rose, I probably should have moved you up on our agenda here because 7:45 is around the hour that members begin to get just a little bit cranky. So can you tell us what you need and why we need it?
Yep, so Mr. Pratt put up our, our graph here that shows that the repairs are just becoming astronomical now.
We seem to be having some sound problems. Chris, can you sound here?
The transmission need to get a new frame and the car, shoot.
So I, I can pick up where Jen left off. I, you know, I've worked with enough on this. And so, you know, as you know, everyone can hear me, right?
Yes.
So as you know, we've, we've had this since I've been here, this ongoing request for either new buses or, and everything like that. So knowing what the board wanted, I asked Jen to put together, you know, some different options we have. And what we're talking about right now is bus eight repair, the trans, the transmission. And so there's a lot of repairs that have to be, to do with this. And I believe this is one of the buses that came up last year. And we went ahead and repaired it, but now there's new issues, but I could be wrong. And so I'll just keep talking until, you know, Jen comes back and she can chime in. And so what you have in the yellow, these are all the, the costs tied to if we were to repair this, this current bus. And so if you see have rebuilt transmission is 1,600, a new trip or go with a new transmission, that's 3,600. You add that to the, you know, the cost of the 3,300. So for total parts and labor, you're looking at 21,544 dollars, we're looking right here, just for parts and labor. If you were to go with the rebuilt transmission with the labor, you're looking at 43,089. And for a total new transmission, you're looking at 4689.
Chris, those numbers don't work based on a rebuilt transmission for 1,600 bucks or new transmission at 3,600 bucks. The labor on a transmission to, to switch it would be maybe eight or 12 hours. So there's, there's a, there's, there's a numbers problem here. 21,5 for total of parts and labor. And then you're more than doubling it to install a $3,600 transmission. That doesn't, that doesn't really work.
So let me just look at this real quick. So you have B2, B9. So if you add total parts and labor to the total transmission, you add 1,600 to it, would be right there. I mean, the, the system's doing the math, so I don't. And then if you look at the total new, with new transition, transmission, which is 3,600, you add that to, I see what you're saying, David, the pots and labor, these right here, is my understanding, is not included in, in this part right here. So I'm just adding up this and these are added up to get the rebuilt and the new transmission. It should say, you know, parts and labor minus the, the actual transmission of rebuilt or new transmission. And so that's what they're looking at.
Okay, Chris, what's, what's our urgency on this? Because I think we need to get accurate numbers here for this board to make a good decision. Can this, can this be postponed until we meet in November, likely on the 11th?
Hi, this is, I dialed in, so can you guys hear me? This is Jennifer.
Hear you well, Jennifer, thank you.
Okay, great, sorry about that. Living in the woods, just kind of, the internet doesn't work all the time, I guess. This is not something that we can wait on because these buses get inspected every three months or four months and they're not going to pass inspection. You know, we've been at this, this place for a while and, you know, even bus 11 today went in, into service and it was, they're talking about a drive train replacement.
Okay, Jennifer, can we go straight to the, straight to the numbers here? Can you give us an explanation? Because on, on the chart here, total parts of labor comes to 21,500. And you have pricing here for rebuilt transmission for 1,600 bucks, new transmission for 3,600 bucks. This is my industry, although this is not my specialty within the industry. And if you accept the conventional wisdom in the industry that a dollar parts is a dollar labor and vice versa. If you use the new transmission number of 3,600 and double it, you're at 7,200 on top of 21,500. If you use the rebuilt transmission number of 1,600 and double that for, to include your labor, you're at 32 on top of 21,500. So that's a huge difference from the 40 some odd thousand dollar number that we had on line 11 below total with new transmission. So square us away on that, would you please?
Right, I mean, they gave me the, the numbers of either used or new. And so it's the labor that I have on the estimate. It is all included of 5,200.
Okay, 5,200, Jennifer, that's 5,200 for a transmission installed, is that correct?
They didn't break it down that way on the actual estimate. So they have the frame and the transmission.
Well, there's no, no frame here on this list of parts.
The, it's used frame.
Well, it's, it's not on, it's not, it's not included in lines one through 14.
Sorry, and I can't see that.
Yes, you do have used frame, my mistake, that's line four, okay? So with a used frame, Jennifer, you're at 21,544.52. When you add the cost of a new transmission, which is 3,600, you're right around 22, about 25,000 exclusive of labor. So if you're 25,000, that's a big, big jump. Okay, so maybe, maybe you have your number here, but you did have a number in excess of 46,000 on that line. So what is the number, is it 25,144?
Yeah, I fixed it. It was just a matter of columns, so that, those are the accurate numbers based on the.
Okay, so I'm going to just ask one more time to make sure that I understand and hopefully board members also understand it. The total to recondition this bus so that it can continue in service would be 25,144.52. Then I see Jennifer, that you're suggesting some options. So now that we've settled on a repair figure, which will round off the 25,000, explain the options and then if you would, we would like to hear your recommendation. Doesn't mean we'll accept it, but we still want to know what your thinking is on this. Ready when you are.
Thank you. So one of the, we can do one of two ways. One, we can buy a bus right out. I've gotten some quotes about two months ago. Of course, those quotes might change, we would have to put, put this out for bed. But to buy a bus would be 55, 5,348. Or we could do a lease option for three years at 4.75 interest rate and the payments would be 15,168.17 for three years. And then at the end of that, there is a residual of 20,000, which the dealership would pay and that's a tax write-off for them. So my recommendation would be to go ahead and lease the bus. The two buses is what I'm asking for. So this number is for one bus, not for two.
Okay, well, you're recommending two buses. And tell us, please, where, where in your budget does the money come from?
Well, I don't have any money in my budget for this.
Have you, have you spoken, have you spoken with Flora to how, how we would pay for it?
Right, I have not. I did look at my budget to realize that there is no money in it because we are still paying a one lease, one year lease on bus number one. And we're, so that's in this year what we're paying for. So there is no money, but these buses are not going to last. We're, we're at the end and with winter coming, they're not going to last. And these buses are our small buses, so they're not our big buses. These buses do a number of things. They go where the, to places where the big buses can't go. We have fewer students on the bus, it's a special ed bus and a, and a tech bus. As well as, these buses are just, I mean, they are going from school time to when school ends and actually till around five o'clock in the afternoon. So they're in demand. To not have them, I wouldn't know what I'd do.
Okay, and I'm, this is, this is not a, this is not a gotcha situation at all, Jennifer. But I think the board needs to understand how we would pay for them. And in order to pay for them, we still need to know where the money's going to come from. And that's what I was, was asking if Flora had been looped in on this discussion yet.
No, she has not.
Okay, Chris, what do we do?
Well, I would say, you know, I, I agree with the board until we, we know what the situation is with the money situation. I think based on the current circumstances of where we're going, we're going to have to, you know, table it until Jen have a conversation with Flora and see if, and where any money is for these buses. And we might have to go to the jarring table if we can't afford this bus or the lease or repairs. Is, we may have to continue to consolidate bus routes and cut back on, on transportation. But I think we take it one step at a time and bring it back to the board.
What I'm going to ask Chris, if you would do here, and I realize I'm, I am speaking on behalf of the board. So if there are board members who disagree with me, I, we need to hear that. However, what I would like to suggest is that if, if Jennifer Rose can get with Flora and come up with a means to pay for the bus and, you know, what Jennifer regards as best option in this situation. I, as I said before, I anticipate that we will be meeting again on the 11th. However, if there is urgency to this, where you have a pending inspection, and I don't know when bus inspections are, Jennifer, but it is possible that we could consider scheduling a special meeting, even a noon time meeting for the exclusive purpose of dealing with the bus issue. I realize this is very important, particularly when you're trying to educate kids in what are already difficult circumstances. So can, can we do that, Chris? Can we do that, Jennifer?
I don't, I don't see why, I think you're, it's a reasonable request what you're asking for.
Okay.
Yeah, right now we had an update on the stat reports that was submitted for FY19. They were missing some information that Brad contacted me last week and I provided to him. That is, we could possibly get something for grant transportation. But, you know, I have to wait until he reviews the information that he was missing for FY19. And as you guys know, so it was information missing from FY19 and FY20 wasn't done, which I completed for him as well. So he right now is reviewing the final aspect for FY19 that he had pending and FY20 that was submitted. So depending, you know, on whatever the state provides for transportation grants, you know, we could just go from there and take that as well into consideration. But we're waiting on that.
Okay, Flora, if, if you would please, along with Chris and Jennifer, would you consider this to be a very important matter that the WNESU board needs to act on as soon as we can?
Yes, I would agree, just seeing those buses, it can't wait.
Okay, thank you. And Jennifer, thank you for your patience. If this occurs during a regular meeting, we'll move you up. And if we do it as a special meeting, we'll try and arrange it so that we're in and out quickly. I see I have hands from at least three members and in no particular order. I'm going to start with George and go to Priscilla and go to Jason Terry. So go ahead, George.
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to point out that, Chris, you have a bus slash transportation committee. It may be a good use of that committee to get involved and help the situation if possible, or at least toss ideas around and, you know, be, be a resource for Jennifer and, and you folks. So I just wanted to point that out, thanks.
Thank you, George. Priscilla?
Two questions. Is 15,000 per year, so it would be a total 45,000, or is it a one-time charge of 15,000 for the three years? And the second question is, it's per year? So that would be 45,000 when a bus, buy one is 55,000. There's not a lot of difference there, plus your interest rate. So that's, there's not a lot of difference there, so you need to consider that. And also, did we get the vans last, the van last year that we were talking about getting?
Yep, we did get the van and it has been utilized every single day.
Just was wondering where we were. Thank you.
Jason Terry?
Um, Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong, but on the lease, uh, F, the company you buy it from, they're going to take care of the maintenance on the uh, bus, correct? You don't have to worry about any of that stuff?
Yeah, the only thing that we would have to worry about is regular oil changes and tires.
Okay, so that, so that might be something to look into as the lease. But my other questions were, um, you're talking, I think somebody said, uh, it's just the small buses, not the big buses that we're talking about?
Correct. It's just the two small buses.
Two small buses. Okay, I was wondering how many we had. Um, and then when you guys are, you and Flora are putting together the numbers and I'm on that uh, transportation committee, if you need a hand, I'd gladly help um, with anything you guys need. Um, can they also, so we have all the information, so we don't have to do this again. Um, you know, put together like a, maybe Flora could put together like a time and motion study, how many miles they drive, how many kids are on the bus. Um, and then also options, you know, kind of, so this way we can get kind of like how much it costs per child to ride on the bus, basically, get a kind of a baseline number. Um, and then also maybe look at options to outsource to other companies if possible. Maybe that might be an option as well. So this way, you know, we have to keep coming back and, you know, putting it back on the table next month, next month, next month. So I'd like to just have all that information if we could.
Jason, I'm going to respond to you very briefly about outsourcing. We have discussed that uh, before. And it, be- because this is a, a fairly urgent situation, it would, I believe, make more sense to a, address outsourcing as part of uh, our budgeting exercise, which we'll be starting up again very soon. Um, so we could get, we could get quotes um, on busing on a new school year. I think that might be a more efficient use of uh, time here. And as, as I'm sure you're aware, um, a outside contractor almost certainly will take over your equipment and then use it until it enters uh, their replacement cycle. And George Smith, I had your hand again.
Uh, no, I, in my mind, answered my own question, but uh, again, I would uh, state that uh, utilizing the transportation committee, committee in which I believe I'm on as well.
Who's, who's, who's chair of transportation committee? Does the transportation committee have a chair who's here tonight?
Um, I thought it was Deb.
Okay, well, it may be Deb. Here, Chris, this is what I would like you to do. Uh, I think that both George and uh, Jason make very good points about utilizing the transportation committee to do the legwork here. And if you can get your transportation committee together, um, you know, with Flora and with Jennifer uh, so that we can have a recommendation to act on when we meet again. I think that would be um, a, a good use of people's time. Any objections to working that way from anyone? Okay, thank you. All right, so I guess we have uh, addressed uh, bus repairs. We do have an item here, seven B, food service account. What is that going to be?
Oh, I believe we already covered that in between Lynn and Flora. That, that's all covered.
Okay, uh, seven C superintendent evaluation, uh, we'll deal with that in executive session after uh, we do the building committee report, which also will occur in executive session. New business for discussion action. I'm not aware of any, Chris. Is there any?
No.
Director's comments. Um, Molly, want to start us off? Okay, I take that as a no. Um, Priscilla?
Uh, yes, um, I would encourage a continuation of looking for options for seventh and eighth graders in particular um, who are really in need of education and schooling. Also, um, maybe those high school classes that are only needing two times a week with no virtual on the other days. Maybe those could be encouraged to be finding more in-person class time as well. And I also would like to congratulate girls field hockey who beat South Burlington four to three tonight and will be going to the state championship game. Winning bowl was scored in the final seconds of the game. So shout out to them.
That, thanks, Priscilla. Great news. Uh, Lynn Morgan?
Um, it was uh, really wonderful hearing the reports today, especially from the business committee. Just thank you so much for all the hard work you guys are putting in and uh, look forward to this bus situation being brought to a, a close. It sounds like it could be difficult for you, Jennifer, not knowing what's going on. We'll hopefully get this straightened out.
Thanks, Lynn. Uh, Cheryl Charles?
I don't have any additional comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Cheryl. Uh, Jason Terry?
Uh, I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, uh, George Smith?
Uh, I just want to somewhat echo um, Priscilla's comments and um, you know, looking forward to continued progress in, in-person instruction.
Thanks, George. Jessa?
Um, the only comment I have is that um, one of our live listeners um, said that the numbers Lynn gave for homeschoolers were actually the numbers for VTVLC students. And I don't know if that's
Um, that, that, that's not true.
Okay, so we have an additional twelve students in Grafton that are homeschooled.
I, I, I take that as a question that you would like to get an answer to. Is that correct, Jessa?
Yeah, it's just interesting that that's um, a third of our student population is homeschooled here.
Thank you. Anything else, Jessa?
No, thank you.
Um, Lynn, we're under director's comment and I leave that unless you think it is tremendously urgent. I try to uh, simply take comments and not engage in discussion under director's comments.
I would just like to make one clarifying bullet.
Please.
Well, that's K, that's K twelve. It's just people who live in Grafton, K twelve, not just Grafton elementary kids.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, um, uh, date of uh, next meeting. Um, I believe that it will be November eleventh. I'm a, I'm aware of the significance of that date. Um, and we would uh, have a regular meeting. Chris, what would be the date on that? That would, that would be bumping right up against Thanksgiving, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I believe so. Let me, I gotta call, let me call the calendar up real quick. So if we look at to November, let's see. The next move, it's scheduled on uh, the twenty-fifth of November.
And Thanksgiving is what date?
Twenty-sixth.
Okay, well, we'll stay with the eleventh at this time. If we find we need a second November meeting, we'll find a time for it. All right, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session uh, for a building committee uh, report and uh, superintendent evaluation inviting administration to attend. Can I have a motion, please? A motion from George, a second from Lynn. I'm going to roll call us. Uh, Molly Bannock?
Yes.
Uh, Priscilla?
Yes.
Okay, uh, George Smith?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Jason Terry?
Yes.
Uh, Lynn Morgan?
Yes.
Uh, Jessa West Clark?
Yes.
Cheryl Charles?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Chris, if you can set us up and let us know when we're ready to go, we'll get going.